Let's have Dan to talk about the double spend counterattacks, threat of retaliation in POW systems. And you should expect me to ask questions along the way.
You're definitely. Great, you're definitely most welcome. Yeah, please, anyone along the way, please ask questions. Okay, so if you can hear me, I'm going to present this work on double spend counterattacks, threat of retaliation proof of work systems. This is joint work with Danny Aronoff, James Lovejoy and Nathan Arula from the MIT D C I, the Digital Currency Initiative, and with my advisor David Parks at Harvard, and we're in the Computer Science Department. And thanks very much for including us in this program. Okay, so we're going to start by talking about kind of Satoshi's vision, you know, for proof of work security. I'm actually coming to you right now from the great state of Florida in Miami, where I don't know if you've seen, but there's this kind of meme of governments and kind of other organizations posting the Bitcoin White Paper on their official website. So if you go to this website, the Miami government official website, it actually lists the Bitcoin paper because they think it's this kind of contribution to society. And so in this white paper, right, we have this kind of basic assumption that the system is secure, the kind of proof of work systems are secure as long as an attacker can't get a majority of the proof of work of the hash power that's being done on the chain. And in that case, transactions are decreasingly likely to be reverted as you wait longer. So kind of as you, as if a transaction gets included in the chain, the longer you wait, the more certain you are that it's not going to be accidentally overwritten, that there's not going to be an accidentally longer chain. So the fundamental question we're going to address here is, is proof of work safe given the existence of hash rate marketplaces? One such hash rate marketplace that has gotten a lot of prominence is called NiceHash, where people can actually buy and sell hash rate. And there's an order book for hash rate that is a kind of, I can buy, you know, five giga hashes, you know, giga hash per second, you know, of time in a certain, in a certain period of time in order to mine in the way that I direct. And actually, recent theory, recent theory has answered this question basically in the negative, saying that proof of work is fundamentally not safe given hash rate marketplaces. Why? Basically, because you can no longer assume Satoshi's point that the system is secure as long as an attacker can't get a majority. With a hash rate marketplace, an attacker can get a majority of the hash power. So some recent theory, assuming deep hash rate marketplaces and a competitive miner economy, has said that basically majority attacks, that is double spend attacks, even without double spending can be very cheap to execute, and therefore the whole concept of proof of work is unsafe. And some evidence, some kind of anecdotal evidence from the idea that the miner economy is actually competitive in that miner, which means that miners aren't making kind of undue excess profits, is, is just the fact that it's actually hard to make money as a miner. You know, if you go to various mining websites, you'll see quotes along the lines of, if you're not certain you can make profits from cryptocurrency mining, the answer is probably no. And that's evidence that the mining economy is actually competitive, that is, miners are not making a lot of profits, they're spending as much as they're earning. And so as long as you have deep hash rate marketplaces and a competitive miner economy, then the result is, according to some theory, that proof of work is unsafe. So why? Basically, because an attacker is about breaking even on block rewards alone. So even without the benefit of a double spend attack, the miner's expenditure in mining should actually equal the right, the, the block rewards that they earn. And so if a mining, if a miner is overtaking the chain, they actually get paid in the block rewards that they earn in that way. Therefore, the transaction, if you do a double spend attack, which, which I'll cover in a bit, the transaction of the actual double spend is just a bonus. So our result is going to be that the possibility of counterattack actually restores safety and reverses this result. So before we had that proof of work is unsafe, even in the presence of these, in the presence of these deep hash rate marketplaces. And we basically take, we expand the game and think about possible counterstrategies and show that the possible, the attacker considering the possibility of a counterattack restores safety. So this is a kind of famous boxer who's famous quote, "The best defense is a good offense." It's not quite analogous to what we're talking about, but it's similar in that the kind of, the possibility of a good, you know, the possibility of a good offense is the best defense. So we allow the possibility of a victim's counter. And we have the same assumptions as the former model. Basically, we have deep hash rate marketplaces and a competitive miner economy. And in that setting, we have that the system is again secure. And we actually have some data evidence that this is the case. So we're going to show evidence that double spend attacks have happened, kind of counter to our theory, but actually at the end, we're going to show that we were able to see kind of after we had theorized about the possibility of counterattacks, we developed a bot to track the reorganizations of different chains, and we actually saw a counterattack happen live, which is not possible to see after the fact because the, the chain, because nodes kind of naturally drop those blocks. But because we were watching, we were able to see kind of an interaction between an attacker and defender live in which, in which the defender actually won. So the counterattack really did restore safety. Okay, so the outline of the talk is going to be, first, we're going to go into detail about double spends. We're then going to talk about this theory of low cost majority attack that we referenced earlier. Then we're going to expand that model to show that allowing the move of retaliation can make majority attack non-fatal and no attack a subgame perfect equilibrium. And finally, we're going to go over some empirical results, including some results about the hash rate marketplace, kind of the behavior we saw on the hash rate marketplace as the result, as the attacks were happening. Okay, so, so basically, what are we talking about? What is a double spend attack that also know, also will refer to that as like a majority attack? Basically, two parties, an attacker and defender, agree to exchange Bitcoin for USD or, or kind of any other cryptocurrency that's transacted on a chain. And so this is a represent, the green blocks are a representation of the chain going forward, kind of every 10 minutes, there's a new block in Bitcoin, for example. So now the attacker, so and you can imagine the defender essentially as a cryptocurrency exchange like Coinbase.com. So the attacker broadcasts a transaction, sending Bitcoin to the defender to Coinbase, and then secretly starts to build an alternate chain. So this is, can you see my mouse?
Yes, yes, I can see them off.
Nice. Okay, so this is the point where this is kind of the, the dominant chain where the attacker sends a transaction to the defender. And at the same time, the attacker starts working on an alternate chain secretly, not kind of against the protocol, in which the attacker sends that same U T X O to themselves, which would invalidate, which would invalidate the above chain if it, if that's, if this chain were extended and were to be long enough. So now the defender waits for kind of an escrow period, let's call it three blocks, typically in Bitcoin it's six blocks, and gives the attacker the USD. So basically what happens here is the attacker has sent some Bitcoin to Coinbase, and then Coinbase has allowed the attacker to withdraw. It doesn't only have to be USD, it could be another cryptocurrency that's kind of more realistic because USD takes a while to withdraw in practice because you need to do like a wire transaction. But cryptocurrency can be withdrawn very quickly so that you could trade Bitcoin for Ethereum and then withdraw Ethereum, and then actually revert the Bitcoin chain so that the initial deposit never happened. So that's what we're going to see. So now the attacker has built out a sufficiently long chain that it's going to overtake the honest chain, but is not yet made public. So that's shown by the white, the white is it's not the canonical chain and the dashed lines are that it's still private. And finally, the attacker is going to release the heavier chain, which double spends the original Bitcoin outputs to A's address, the attacker's address itself. So now the attacker has both the USD and the BTC, and basically it has stolen from the exchange. But so this is a double spend attack. But in the course of this, what had to happen was the attacker had to get more hash power for itself than the rest of the chain combined had, which was working on kind of the, the A to D transaction. So the attacker was able to get a majority of the hash power. So that's why we call it like a, a majority attack as well. And this can happen even without a double spend transaction. So any kind of, you could imagine just having a longer chain that actually has no, that maybe just removes, removes a particular transaction or something like this. Okay, so now let's talk about this theory of low cost majority attack. So this is modified and inspired by a bunch of different work, which has all basically come to the same conclusion from Buddhist 2018, from Hour in 2019, from Bon, from Joe Bonno, actually in 2016, and most and kind of in the, so those are all academic style. And actually, the Bitcoin community itself has come up with a sort of explanation for why double spend texts haven't happened that much, and that's that's due to Hsu et al., which kind of a white paper explaining in a similar style. So what are the assumptions that basically all of this work makes? Is that minor free entry leads to zero profits. That is, if anyone, if Bitcoin in fact is a permissionless protocol, then anyone can enter and start mining, anyone who at least can buy an ASIC, right? That's these specialized hardware for mining proof of work. And as long as there are profits to be made, excess profits, that is, the, the reward is greater than the amount spent on mining, kind of combined with the, the cost of the ASICs and so on, then miners will continue to enter. And the second assumption is that an attacker has access to a liquid hash rate marketplace. And so what is the result? That attacks are cheap and maybe even free. So here's an explanation of how they could be free. So in this competitive miner economy, or this free entry, the reward per block should actually equal the total world mining expenditure per block. So what is, so let's just call the reward per block P B, and the total expenditure is like the amount of hash rate on average needed to generate a block and the cost, times the cost of that hash rate. So now let's think about this. So what is the net cost of a lengthy attack? So where you have to, basically where you want to extend the chain, the longest chain by E. So it's kind of the hash cost of mining E blocks, right? That's how much you're going to spend minus the block rewards of E blocks, which is the amount that you're going to earn. And basically, kind of almost tautologically, like the, the hash cost of a lengthy attack is just E times the hash per block times the cost per hash is E P B, right? But that's, that's exactly what you earn as, because of this kind of competitor miner economy equality. So the net cost of attack is you spend, kind of all miners are always spending as much as they get. And so if you're kind of the top miner, then you're spending as much as you get, and so the cost of an attack is zero. And actually, so now the double spend attack, suppose the double, the transaction is kind of worth V to you, then then the transaction is just like pure profit because you kind of stole an additional V from the defender as, as the attacker. So to repel attacks, then we want the net cost of attack to be greater than the benefit of attack, and in this model, we have that the net cost is zero and the benefit of attack is V, so attacks kind of will always happen all the time whenever possible. Okay, so now we come up with a safety condition by assuming that we kind of extend this model and say that it's actually not as frictionless as the previous model made it seem.
Then, then before you go on, can you offer some, some comments on why that this extremely sharp, but but somehow that not very true result, like why that in practice that it seems like it's not, not as, as smooth as, as the theory.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So, so that's, that's the next slide, and also that's, that's kind of what the whole presentation is about. So like one, so one theory we put forward basically is that the costs are not the cost of buying hash rate are, do not actually obey this equation. There are some slippage costs basically. And also that when attacks are done, that actually harms, we conjecture, and it's a common assumption that basically all of those previous works make, that that actually harms the value of the token you that you get. So suppose that.
I thought that was the leading explanation.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, this is the route that you're going.
That's right, yeah. So we're going to say that there's two kind of market impact parameters, Kappa and Delta. One is that suppose the market is not fully liquid, and there's actually like a slippage result where when you like you eat into the order book, the prices is going to go up. So when you buy hash rate, it's not going to be actually at the perfect marginal cost. You're going to incur an additional kind of Kappa, multiplicative Kappa factor. One kind of, so the actual cost will be a one plus Kappa multiplicative factor. And then we also argue that, as all those previous words do, that the, the block rewards, that there probably is some penalty to getting Bitcoins if Bitcoin was just known to be attached. Because basically you can't hide that this happened. When a chain is reorg, it's public to everyone, which is, which is actually how we kind of were empirically able to, to look at some of these things. So it's evident to everyone, and then people kind of, it's conjectured that people will lose confidence in that chain because its transactions are no longer totally guaranteed to be safe. So basically, the reward you get is discounted by a one minus Delta factor instead of, yeah. So now basically, the, the new result with these lippage factors is that, okay, so you're saying that your net cost of attack should be greater than the benefit of attack, right? That's kind of a safety, that's a safety requirement, right? The cost should be greater than the benefit. And so the cost is kind of the first line, one plus K times E times the hash per block times the cost per hash, which is EPB. And then minus the, minus the reward, that should, that all should be greater than this double spend value that you're getting. So this gives you an idea of, and it makes sense that basically the, it's dependent on the value of the transaction. So if the value of the transaction is very high, then you're basically going to have to work super hard to make the chain protect transactions of that value because it's very, because it's very valuable to steal. And so the result you get is that the, there's a bound on the, how big the block reward has to be. So if you want transactions of a certain size V to be safe, then the block reward has to be greater than kind of this amount, which is the V divided by these, add it, you add these slippage factors together. And you can see that as the slippage factors get larger, the amount that the, the size that the block reward has to be is smaller. So this kind of intuitively makes sense. And so our argument basically is that today Bitcoin probably appears to have safe values for Kappa and Delta, where you actually, there's not really a liquid marketplace for, for Bitcoin hash power on the scale of reorging the whole, you know, reorging six blocks of the chain. But there are many kind of lower validity chains, and ethers, ether is probably the same. It's probably quite difficult to attack Ethereum in practice because there's just not a market for it. But what about for the chains for which many transactions don't satisfy this? And what about the future of Bitcoin where there might develop, like these marketplaces are very young still, and they may well develop. So Bitcoin, if, if Bitcoin is really going to be the basis of a, you know, a new pair of financial paradigm, then we should really think, consider, is it safe in, in the presence of such hash rate marketplaces? Okay, so now we're going to talk about our retaliation result. So the basic, the basic insight is that the defender, the Coinbase.com can get hash rate as well from the same marketplace. Like if they, if an attacker can get hash rate from a liquid marketplace, so can Coinbase. And so how would this work? What, like, what is that, like, like, so what? Well, actually, they could kind of counter, counter, they could counterattack, counter double spend. And actually, they have a little bit of a easier job because all they have to do is extend the last public chain on which their transaction, on which the A to D transaction was valid. So let's, let's kind of map this out a little bit. So imagine the game between the attacker and, and here we're going to use the V for victim. Sorry for that confusion. So basically start off with the, with the defender, the exchange having a value of 100. Now suppose that the attacker successfully does a double spend attack, so they spend, you know, they spend some resources and they actually capture that value, but not fully, right? So suppose it costs 10, you know, total to do this attack. But it's, so it's worthwhile to do because you get 100. So it's still worthwhile to do, but it's, it costs something. It's not, it's not zero. So basically, we're assuming that the Kappa and Delta factors are non-zero, but not enough to, to make the chain completely safe. So now, when the attacker gets the transaction, he's spent 10, but he's got the value, which is the 100. So he's left with 90. And it appears the attacker is kind of in a great position and he's won. But actually, the thing that that initial theory doesn't consider is that the defender could just extend the original chain at their own cost, you know, I suppose a cost of 10, right? Similarly. And then what happens? And then the attacker is actually out the 10 that, that he spent attacking because that, that payment is not coming back. But they actually don't get the V, the kind of transaction they were arguing over because now the canonical chain has the original transaction embedded in it. So now the attacker is actually at a loss, and the victim, while not as up as it used to be, is certainly way better off than just letting the attacker get away with it. So that's kind of the fundamental idea.
Can you say this 10 again? 10 is a slippage, those things?
Oh, yeah, 10 is the kind of net cost of, net cost of attack. So if we go back.
Kappa and.
Yeah, so it's basically like, so it's this, so we see net cost of attack. The safety condition is that the net cost of attack is greater than the benefit of attack, right? So we call all of this, one plus Kappa, E minus, one minus Delta EPB. This is like 10.
I see, I see. And you need it because you need them to bear a certain real loss.
Right, right, that's right. That's right. If it's zero, that's right. If, if everything is zero and every, it's like perfectly, perfectly liquid, then I think you get, it's a harder, much harder to analyze at least.
Got it.
Yeah.
So you're basically, you're basically saying that, you know, you, I took it away, but the other guy can do the same thing to you.
Right.
It's kind of a threat, off equilibrium, off equilibrium threat.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. So the, the kind of result we're going to argue is that the equilibrium is that the attacker is not going to want to attack in the first place because he knows that off equilibrium, the, the attacker will kind of get back at him.
But what if the white one can attack again? Counter, counter, counter attack?
That's right. Absolutely. It can happen for sure. So, so we're going to discuss that, that kind of extended game format. Yeah. So what are the assumptions that we're making in this model? The assumptions are that the, both the attacker and defender have equal access to hash power and are able to do a quick response. Okay, we're also going to make the assumption that the net profit, the net profit of attack decreases with every attack, which can be, that's a kind of a technical result which can be achieved in a number of ways. But basically, one example of this is that the attack cost remains constant, but the price of the asset decreases every attack. So basically, this is to avoid the game going on forever. And then finally, we're going to assume that there is some asymmetry, that the, that the defender has a higher penalty to losing than the attacker. And we think that's a reasonable assumption because typically, like, the parties that get double spent, that get attacked are major exchanges, and it becomes public very quickly who got attacked. And the parties doing the attacking are typically like anonymous pirates, basically. So there's no like reputational cost there, where Coinbase is a huge business, right? They're doing like billions in trading every day and collecting huge fees on that. And so they have an interest in you trusting them and kind of trusting that they're safe, not getting attacked and stuff like this. So typically, the defending party is a public entity and the attacking party is an anonymous entity. So we think there's some reputational difference. So in that model, so, so now let's talk about the, the full kind of extensive form game. So it, the game starts off with the attacker's move on the, on the left side, where the attacker gets to choose two options. It gets to fight or quit. So if it quits, that is, it doesn't attack in the first place, then the attacker's payoff is zero, and the defender's payoff is V, right? They get to keep the value of the transaction. So now suppose the attacker chooses to fight, which means they do a single attack. So in this kind of language, the defender, and suppose the defender quits, they don't retaliate. Then the defender suffers for that loss, they suffer a reputation cost minus R. And then the attacker has to pay a cost, C, that's kind of the net cost of attack. And then they receive V, however, V is discounted according to this decreasing function phi, which is a function of the round number. And phi is this decreasing function that in this model shows basically, we're saying as time goes on, the value of the asset is kind of depreciating more and more because the, maybe the more attacks there are in some kind of monotonic way, the less and less you're trusting that this is a viable asset. So now we see, suppose the defender actually counterattacks. So they, the attempt is to fight, and then the attacker quits. So the attacker doesn't fight back. So then the attacker actually is stuck with this. So then the attacker actually is stuck with this with this cost of attack minus C. But the defender now gets his V back, but it's discounted with two kind of two double spent attacks have happened, right? Two majority attacks have happened. So it's discounted twice and they've had to pay the cost C. So this is just one kind of model, but it helps it helps give kind of a pictorial representation of the game we're talking about where we're saying the game could go on. And we are exactly representing what you were saying, that the defender, that the attacker could counter counterattack and so on. So the result that we get is basically deterrence. We get a no attack equilibrium, whereas so the the threat of counterattack deters the initial attack from happening. And what's the intuition? We've kind of rigged the game in in the defender's favor, right? With the with the asymmetry. But basically, you can think about both the attacker and the defender have a holdout time beyond which the cost of attack is higher than the best possible reward. So like after a certain amount of time, it's no longer even worth majority attacking again because everyone's like this chain is just garbage. The the reward, the value of the Bitcoins you're going to get are not worth any real world electricity cost you have to pay to attack it. And so if the attacker basically knows that the defender's holdout time is larger than the attacker's holdout time, then both expect that the defender V will fight for longer than A. And that eventually, if the game does go kind of into the fight in the direction of fight, that the victim will win eventually, though at cost. Right? It's a periodic victory or whatever. And so A kind of knowing this, doing backward induction should not start the fight. Okay, so now let's talk about the the kind of empirical results that we saw.
Very nice. I let me make one comment is that your results remind me this war of attrition.
Exactly.
I don't know if you guys, okay.
That's right. Yeah. So actually, that's right. In the in the paper, we do, we discussed the 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 way we thought of this. We came to this result is a combination of these two classic game theory models, one of which is the War of Attrition. Exactly. In this classic, it's which was yeah, it was originally introduced in the kind of biological game theory modeling. And as the notions of kind of the notion of equilibrium, they are a little different, but we yeah, we discussed that in the paper if you're interested. So, okay, so then basically, in order to examine this was kind of phenomenon, we wanted to see how many double spent attack, majority attacks were actually happening in on real chains in the real world. And so we built with the help of James was one of our co-authors, who is a master student at the Digital Currency Initiative and now is working on now is working on the federal Federal Reserve kind of US Fed Fed Coin. He built this reorg tracker that basically monitored, it was like a node that operated on a kind of you know, 30 different chains, basically that were all derivatives of Bitcoin and Ethereum. And so those changes, those chains are extremely broad, like Bitcoin, Bitcoin Cash, Bitcoin Gold, Vertcoin, Litecoin, Litecoin Cash, Ethereum, Ethereum Classic. Zen, you know, things you've never heard about Zen Cash. Zcash you have heard about, but and so on. And through monitoring these, you could actually see when the attacks happen and you have to the 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 critical thing is you have to be watching at the time that they happen because the default node behavior is just to always switch to the heaviest chain and discard all previous chains. So basically, if an attack happens, then if you basically, if you suppose it attack happened, just like a single attack, there was no defense. If you go after the fact and download kind of the the current chain from a node, it's just going to give you the fact that it's just going to give you kind of the the attacker to attacker transaction pathway because the default behavior is not is to ignore all kind of weaker forks. So we actually ran this software to monitor at the time and we saw.
Are you saying that when I, when I try to download everything, you cannot download all the fork forking?
Exactly. That's not the standard node behavior. Like if you download the Ethereum chain, Ethereum forks a lot. Actually, it has these uncle, it has these uncle forking and that's how they achieve higher like higher some a little bit higher throughput than Bitcoin. Basically, when you increase the throughput, then you have the expectation of some amount of forking, which is different than the double spending, right? It's kind of an unintentional forking. Yeah, but it's low about kind of one or two blocks. So that happens.
As a result, they just get rid of these folks.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. So it turns out that some have, some of these attacks have been observed and we were able to observe a number of the attacks ourselves. And so one in particular that we're talking about is on the coin in in February of 2020, we observed a few attacks on the coin Bitcoin Gold. Eight attacks a total for a cost of 120,000. That was kind of the V, the the total cost of the transaction was $120,000 of value at the time. But there have been much larger attacks up to like seven, you know, 18 million that is known to be from the exchange Bitrex in 2018, also on Bitcoin Gold. So the notation RT kind of in this table means that the the source for the data is the reorg tracker, which is this which is this software that we came up with. So let's look at a kind of interesting phenomenon is at the same time, we also were tracking the order books of this hash rate marketplace as the attacks were happening. Because we thought it's possible that the attacker could be renting from the marketplace. And then in that case, if they're renting a large amount, we should see this price increase. Right? In the in the price data, which is actually exactly what we saw in in some cases. So on the Vertcoin, on the Vertcoin reorg attack, basically, you can see that the price, right? So the price is like 50 cents per unit hash rate right before the attack. And then as soon as the attack is starting, you see this increase in price, it basically doubles, the hash rate price doubles. So you can see this like slippage in action, right? It doubles and it basically continues at, it continues at $1 for the rest of the, for the rest of the attack and then drops back down to 50 cents after the attack. And you can also see that the capacity increases. So the way that NiceHash works is that kind of a number of mining pools are running the NiceHash software and NiceHash tells them what is the most profitable coin to mine. And so when there's greater demand for a coin, basically, the the GPU miners switch to this different hash rate algorithm and mine on that. So that's why we see the capacity increase as well as the price.
How big is a NiceHash market markets fraction? Market power?
So for for like the SHA 256 hashing, you know, that Bitcoin uses. I think it's just a few percent at the moment and same with Ethereum. So with Ethermine, which is the ETH hash algorithm, it's also just a few percent, but a few percent of the Bitcoin hash rate is 200% of you know, Bitcoin Cash's hash rate, for example. So it's so it's a for some of these weaker hash rate coins, you can totally overwhelm that coin with the existing liquidity on the hash rate, existing hash rate marketplaces.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. And so here, but here is kind of a counter narrative to that, which is that actually on some of the attacks, the price did not correspond. So we saw like a number of attacks on Bitcoin Gold. And here you can see that the price basically doesn't seem to have a strong correlation with the attack. So perhaps I think that means that the attacker perhaps had mining of their own or were connected to a mining pool of their own or something like this. That was not in this hash rate place, hash rate marketplace. So a fun real world example that real world result that came from this research contradicts this line that I think a lot of people think that basically double spent attacks and counterattacks are hard to do. But the basically, an attacker has an advantage because they kind of have the element of surprise. So they can do an attack and the defender has to be like actively ready to counterattack. And so like, oh, it'll never happen because you have to be ready or something like it's too hard to be ready or something. We actually, after publishing this paper, so I'm not going to say the name of the chain, but we were contacted by an organization that represented a chain that was concerned about these attacks. And actually, kind of based on our research, they started actively monitoring NiceHash. And they made arrangements with a mining pool kind of off market. So they're doing like an OTC hash rate transfer for your future. There they made like a futures deal with a mining pool that if they were reorged, that the mining pool would violate the longest chain principle and would mine along the original chain in order to in order to create demonstrate this credible threat. And actually, and as a further kind of proof or you have real world support for our ideas is that after we came up with this theory, we actually saw and we built this reorg tracker, we saw a counterattack happen in action. And it was not kind of a very simple example either. So the value of the transaction in question was about $50,000. And we basically saw that, okay, so it was attacked. So a reorg was done. Kind of that took three hours between the the attacker publishing, the attacker's transaction and the attacker kind of reorging. And then we saw that within 20 minutes, the defender actually extended the original chain. So they did a counterattack. And you can just see this play out on the on the chain. And then the attacker actually did, in fact, a counter counterattack. So the attacker spun up their own their own miners. And again, you know, 15 minutes later had extended their original chain of the attacker chain. And this went on for quite a bit. The then the attacker extended it further and we thought like, oh, man, maybe the attacker has won. But no, in fact, at the very end, the defender came back and 30 minutes later and kind of decisively defeated the attacker kind of to keep the status, basically to keep the status quo. So that we see that as a potential, though we don't know who these parties are, of course, because everyone's just an anonymous hash on the chain. But there's, but it's evident that they're spending considerable non-negligible amounts of money to do these attacks and they're noticing kind of that their transactions are being stolen. So in summary, basically, this simple theory shows that it could be cheap to attack some chains because the rewards pay for the mining cost. And we agree and we have actually seen some attacks. But we show a game theory model in which double spending may not occur in equilibrium, even if the attack is cheap. And there's evidence that the attackers can lose. So a couple of points of discussion. One is that as we discuss this, like the market impact of the hash rate marketplace is high for Bitcoin and Ethereum, which protects them from double spends and it's low for others. And the reason why this, why these ideas are still worth thinking about in spite of that is that the market for hash rate futures and derivatives is growing considerably. Because as mining becomes a more professional field, it's essentially like farming. If you if you think about it, like what is what is running a mining farm? You're kind of like growing an asset, right? You so you have a future stream of Bitcoins that coming in, but you have huge risk in the price of those Bitcoins because the price is super volatile. So you may want to sell futures, hash rate futures, right? To de-risk, you know, or to buy options or whatever, to de-risk, just as a farmer would want to buy corn options or whatever to de-risk. So so we think that is that will be the development of the field. The furthermore, another point is that so yes, maybe you might consider that suppose any double spend, suppose any transaction that's can be double spent, will be double spent. Even in that case, crypto has some utility in that it enables parties to make large transactions between trusted parties without the risk of double spending. So basically, it enables transfer of value between trusted parties in a finalized way that maybe otherwise could not be done. So that's kind of a a counter take of, okay, what it, you know, is Bitcoin? If Bitcoin is double spent kind of in every in every case that it can be, is there any use for it? There still may be. And finally, kind of what about the case of multiple victims? So suppose a single attacker chooses to attack multiple victims there with different chains, they kind of double spend different in different ways. Would those two victims kind of attack each other? And kind of battle it out? And then will the attacker win in the end? We actually think not that we haven't kind of fully done the theory, but basically, we think it should be possible for the victims to coordinate on the last kind of common honest chain and be able to kind of combine forces and fight the attacker in that sense. But that definitely would require a significant amount of software. So finally, so for future work, we ask the question, can we consider, can we carry a similar insight to other blockchain interactions? So basically, we saw that if you consider only one party as a possible deviator from the from the honest from the honest activity, then you get this no safety result, right? Where everything is a possible attack. But when you consider that many people can deviate from the honest protocol, then you actually recover safety. So similarly, actually, there's an analogous feature, we think, in selfish mining, where if you just consider a single selfish miner, then you get this famous result, kind of a selfish mining that you can do better by hiding your blocks. But if everyone is selfish mining, then then it doesn't actually benefit anyone to do the selfish mining. So there's some analogy there. And similarly, we think there's an analogous direction in not just hash rate, like proof of work is about hash rate, right? So there's hash rate marketplaces. But as those get more sophisticated, as we get derivatives, we'll see kind of more interesting results there. And as as people move to proof of stake, proof of stake, the analogous, the analogy to hash rate is just the token itself, right? So and we know that there are considerable lending marketplaces for those tokens. So if as and as people, if there are going to be these like stake futures or whatever marketplaces and lending possibilities, then basically a similar thing, similar kind of attacks could apply in proof of stake as well and and DeFi governance. All right, that's all. Thank you so much for listening and thanks for inviting us again.
Thanks, Dan. It's interesting work.